Welcome to Girl Talk. Girl Talk is a lively discussion about the daily lives of women in our valley, of the challenges, the successes, the obstacles, the hurdles that they have to overcome in their daily lives. And we are glad today to have two women that are making a difference in our communities. They are both running for county commissioner, Jackson County Commissioner. And we had a part one, and I saw them at a forum this week. And so we have a couple of clips, or we have one clip we had in part one, and another one we're going to have in part two. But this discussion is not going to be as formal as some of the others. I will mention that their opponents did not show up at the forum that I attended, which I think is really discouraging. They're both running against incumbents, which is a real challenge. And so we have two women here today. We have Lynetta Witt and we have Amy Theron. And we're going to start-
And I'm the co-host.
Oh, Carol!
I'm Carol!
I am so sorry!
I just feel like I'm invisible here, but I am also co-host, and I welcome you ladies.
I'm so sorry!
And first thing I want to do is thank you for running.
Absolutely.
And let's move on.
Carol?
No, just go on.
I'm so sorry. Anyway, no post-editing. This is going to be, you guys are all going to get to see this on TV, sorry. But anyway, we left off in part one with a question about the jail, 1,000-bed jail that has been proposed for quite a while. And it's never gone on the ballot, though, has it, ladies?
No, there was a survey.
Okay, that was it. There was a survey, and most people pushed back on it. So Lynetta, you had started, but you didn't get to finish in part one. Would you like to finish up with your thoughts on us having a new jail here in Jackson County?
So I was at the point talking about the population that comes into the jail, and there's not enough space to house them until they're arraigned. So they are released with a court date and are to reappear for a court date, but the majority do not reappear. The lack of housing is an issue in this also because they don't necessarily have an address, so they're hard to track down, and when they come back, it's because they've re-offended. So in terms of a jail, I think we need a new jail, but what it is called, how many beds does it need, is really important because of the pressures with lacking mental health care providers and facilities. When you have people who appear in the emergency room who are too unstable to be discharged into the community, they're occupying an emergency room bed. So there's that population. There's also the population that come to the jail, and they lose connection with their provider as well and their medication. So if we called a facility a rehabilitation center, because then you're also rehabilitating offenders, and you're offering rehabilitation and grounding and centeredness for people with mental health conditions and also addiction services, that's a whole different criminal model. What I want to point out is people who are sentenced for longer stays, they go to a state facility where that's more of a rehabilitation center. Jackson County is more of a holding center when you're arraigned, and then you're awaiting trial, for instance. So there are a lot of difficulties in that model. And I think that prevention would be the main thing we need to focus, focus on before we decide how we're going to build a jail, and what size, and what it's going to be called. Because if you can prevent people from coming into the criminal justice system with addiction prevention and with mental health services, you would decrease that volume substantially.
And that's expensive.
For the county. The jail system is expensive.
Yes.
So back to the question of do we agree with the jail or not?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So it looks like we're moving forward regardless of what the voters have to say by purchasing this land. So that's already happening. And the proposal to the voters, you know, they look at a new funding model, right? The intention is when we stop paying for our library, we will then be paying for this. And so it reduces that 74 cents down to about 60 cents. And so that's part of the discussion, being able to have this space regardless of, you know, what the design is, so that we're prepared when the voters do pass a jail bond, or looking at, what I see coming is, how do we do this regardless of kind of what the voters are able to do?
Pay for a jail.
Right. So how do we get creative and do this regardless of the voters? That's kind of what I feel like I'm seeing. I am also really concerned, when I do, when I've done the jail tour, there's a population that is the offenders for robbery, theft, same thing, right? And they're ending up not being held accountable. And so they're going into the system. We don't have the space, so we're putting them back out on the streets. And the cost, I believe the county does a really good job of kind of capturing and sharing this information to the county, just on those top-tier offenders, is so expensive that being able to house them, at least through the arraignment, is a really important piece. So I understand that piece. And I think there is the other issue of mental health and addiction. And I don't know if it is appropriate to say we're doing a jail/rehabilitation center. So the conversations around that, I don't think are fully developed. And I think that it's really the commissioner's job to continue to have those conversations and figure out what the best model is. So is the best model us having a more robust mental health and addiction programs and services, mandatory treatments? Does that have to be co-located with a jail, or is that something separate? So during the next year of conversations, I think it's really important to look at which models maybe counties have implemented that are successful, and figure out as a community, what is our population in the system right now that needs service that could be pulled out of the, you know, jail system and treated? There's a grant that our sheriff has talked about that another county has been able to secure, where they're actually having a mental health counselor right along with the sheriffs and doing some prevention. So they're able to go to houses of those individuals that maybe end up in jail frequently and say, hey, do you have your medication? Do you need check-in supports? And that actually, you know, redirects those folks from coming into the jail on a monthly or regular basis. So programs like that, I think we can be implementing right away. A jail is three to eight years out, even if we're, you know, moving forward really quickly. So being able to look at what are we doing in the meantime is also a very important piece for me.
So we could have two different buildings. We could have two different facilities on this 47 acres. One could be a 500-bed jail, and one could be a 500-bed rehabilitation center. Is that possible?
I think all things are possible.
Good, I like that.
And I think in the meantime, while we're waiting for the proper vision for the facility, we need to look at what do we need in mental health care facilities, period. There are no inpatient facilities for adolescents. And we could do a lot for restoring stability in the lives if we could take care of our mental health population. And they don't need 18-inch-thick concrete reinforced walls. I think one risk is that you criminalize mental health conditions and addiction, and then in the crossover, you're criminalizing homelessness. So that is sort of a triangle of depression, lack of hope. You know, it's a whole focus of where, what's the status of our population in being able to find jobs? And first, you need a house and an address and all of those essential ingredients.
So you want to talk about climate change, Carol?
If you don't mind switching gears here.
Not at all.
Okay.
We'll go from one oppression to the other.
Okay.
Or depression.
Right. The UN, IPCC, the committee that really keeps us informed of what's happening worldwide regarding climate change. They clearly stated that we have 12 years to keep the planet from warming 2 degrees Celsius. If it does get to that point or above, it will be catastrophic. So what are your, what is your vision, and how would you implement it for doing our share in Southern Oregon to prevent? We can't prevent climate change, but we can certainly slow it. How would you do that?
I'll start first, I guess. I think renewable energy is essential. I believe that we can create jobs developing solar systems and installing them on every rooftop, from Costco to Walmart. It takes political will to move this. I think mass transit plays a role in this, and we need to really look at that, you know, place that has a very large county with people who live rurally, and their specialty health care is in Medford. How do we provide group transport? We need to think about models that their group, that their visits are clumped, you know, from Prospect or Butte Falls or Trail, so that we provide people with a way to get here. And many are seniors who no longer drive. So how do we look at services that we can give? The White City RCC Campus is not currently served by RVTD. And that has the potential to really be training people in skills of welding and electrical and plumbing. And some of those families have one car, so who gets the car? But we could provide mass transit. So I think we need to think very progressively. The Water Conservation Wise Project could bring hydroelectricity because of the drop from the higher lakes to the valley. So there is so much potential there. And I also think in understory management in our forest, we have opportunities for small diameter wood production programs with cross-laminated timbers and develop a new forest industry that's green.
So I agree with a lot of those approaches that Lynetta's sharing. And I think the place to start is really owning that this is a problem and being invested and coming up with solutions to the problem. I think that the time to sit and, you know, continue debating whether this is an issue or not, I think we've passed that. I think as a county, we can be leaders in being able to say, you know, these are the things that are going to impact us in the next 10 years. What are we going to do today to set us up for long-term sustainability or success? I look at our capital improvement projects. You're looking at the jail right now. We should be leaders in building with, you know, lead standards. How can we lead by example? What projects are we going to invest and focus on? I think all of those should be focused on renewable resources, like we're talking about making sure that we have the right trained jobs. So we need people and skilled labor so that when the Clean Energy Bill does pass, we're able to implement here. I would take our Economic Development Committee and really look at who, what kind of jobs can we recruit to this area? What kind of businesses do we want to embrace here? So I think there's a lot of tangible things that the commissioners are able to do.
Thank you.
And I think there are two vital committees that haven't been functioning. One is the Economic Development one, and the other is the Natural Resources Advisory Council. And both of those have not been functional, and their information and their consensus not necessarily acknowledged by the commissioners. So we ask these specialists to work, and we need to work with them because they are working for us.
That's right.
They're the people who understand what's going on. And I think the economic development really needs to focus on the understory that makes us sustainable ultimately.
Very good. Thank you.
Next question. How would you differentiate yourself from your opponent? And in conjunction with that, has there been any negative campaigning that has gone on? And if so, how have you addressed it? So would you like to start, Amy?
Yeah, I would say, first of all, there's no negative campaigning. I think we're all just talking about what the job is and how we would do the job. My opponent, as an incumbent, is able to, you know, show what his track record is as a, he really runs on being a pragmatic leader. I would say I'm different in that I really like to take action on things. I believe that including a diverse group of your community is vital to decision-making. I don't think it's something that you leave up to the staff or administrator, but something that you really need to go out and get community voice and engagement. There are some big issues facing our county, and we're a big county. I was up in Rogue River. And they said, you know, the commissioner hadn't been here since 2012.
Oh, my gosh. That's terrible.
And so my opinion is, is that the region, our county, is better when everybody is at the table, and we can come up with solutions around homelessness, our economic development. And particularly Rogue River, them saying, okay, do we need to come to Medford to get services? Can we have, you know, equal sheriff patrolling? What about our roads and safety? So I think that so that it's equitable, everybody needs to be at the table, and that really should be a focus. So that's how I would say that we're a little bit different. My background, I love projects and getting things done. You know, I've built a park. I'm finishing on a school in two weeks. We'll be moving in. I like getting things done, and I think that this is a place in the community that you could have some serious impact and get things done.
Right. Agreed. Lynetta?
Well, my, the incumbent that I'm running for that seat feels that climate will change, and that is a fact, which is another way of saying we do not have climate change.
Or in that, by again, your opponent is-
Believes that climate will change, that it's a natural evolution of the planet, that we are not in a place of accelerated human-induced climate change. In so many words, yes, things are changing, but what is the human impact on that? Is there acceleration? It would be, no, this is a natural rolling event. So that's a distinguishing place. I also feel that she is very into listening to people and community input and what the voters support. So just the GMO campaign, because it was community-based rallying around an issue. I don't see the leadership there. And I think one thing that the commissioners need to do is have a vision. Where are we going? That requires identifying the issues that hold us back, getting at the ideology of our difficulties, and acknowledging there are difficulties. And then creating that leadership that builds collaboration and bringing the best together for the solutions. Because this is not an individual thing. I would say overall, the county commissioners are fairly passive. They take in information, but I don't see the leadership happening across the board. And both incumbents have said that, you know, it's a steep learning curve, and it's taken a long time to understand the process. And I would just speak for Amy, and I'll speak for myself. I'm a quick learner. I love learning. I'm teachable, and I'm ready to get in there. And just in the campaign, I have learned so much about our county and the people and what the needs are, that the other, the rest of the process and the meetings and how they're conducted, there's a process there. And fully understanding the budget and what, where things can move. But I just see that the commissioners need to really advocate. But you can't advocate if you don't have direction, if you're not really addressing underlying issues.
Right. Well said.
I agree with you, that they're passive. And that's kind of the point I was making earlier in part one, is that they allow themselves to be kind of directed by a very strong administrator. And I think they need to step up and provide that leadership to the administrator. We've got a video that I took at the forum that we had, that you guys had earlier this week. And I believe the topic on this is on marijuana here in our county. So can we run that video and hear what the candidates had to say?
And we will start with Ms. Theron, I believe. Yes. What can and should the commission do in connection with the abundant marijuana grows in the county?
All right. So legalizing marijuana brought a whole kind of ripple effect to our valley. It's a new economy. It surpassed our wine economy. It created new jobs at, you know, maybe $4 an hour more than current jobs. So those are the positives. The negatives, unfortunately, the ripple effects that I've seen are really an increase in crime, and that's what I hear when we're out kind of in rural areas without any income to support additional sheriff patrols. So the sheriffs are out patrolling maybe one to two times a week, and the community members are feeling, you know, scared from folks that are out in their communities, theft, robberies, et cetera. There's also, the majority of issues is coming from water rights, so issues between neighbors around water. The issue that is most, I guess, scary for myself and my kids actually, is the pesticide issue. So, you know, you're choosing what you want to do on your property, but the ripple effect to the rest of us is definitely there. So those are definitely issues that I've seen. The commission can enforce ordinances that are already in place and then look at areas that we need to beef those up. One opportunity that the sheriffs worked for was to get a grant to increase patrols and create a task force to address all of the other ripple effects. So being able to get folks together to solve those problems as well.
A lot of the responsibility comes with initially what boundaries you put in place when you started the allowance of the grows. I might be starting this a little backwards. But the state said yes, and you didn't have to be a resident of Oregon for three years before you were able to grow. So we had a lot of outside money coming in, purchased land above its value price. And now with a free market collapse of the overgrow, you have farmland that has tons of rocks for indoor grows dumped upon it, which you will never retrieve for farmland again, plus the cleanup of abandoned pesticides and herbicides. So we have a situation where we need a whole lot more action, and the tax base from cannabis grows went to retail. And we have 40% of the growth and 5% of the population. So we must work with our legislators to bring more of the money down here to allow code enforcement and also then cleanup of these lands afterwards.
Well, that was interesting. We're getting short on time, so we're going to move on to our next question. Carol?
What do you say, what I'd like to know? What are your three top priorities? When you get elected, what are the first three things you're going to do? Amy?
I'm going to case this in. The first thing that I want to do as county commissioner is really revitalize our citizen advisory committees to empower them around taking action on housing, our health care, specifically mental health, and our job, our economy, not our job. And specifically, housing, you know, really impacts so many other areas of our lives. I don't know how you can have a healthy community if people don't have a roof over their heads. It affects families in school if they're jumping around from house to house or house surfing. Their kids end up in different schools with really limited success on graduation and being successful. And we look at folks with addiction or mental health, they're not going to become stable until they're housed, is how I, that's how I firmly believe. The services that we provide folks around mental health is seriously lacking. I look at my own middle school students, and there is not a lot of service available, and there is a big need. We've hired in somebody to help with some mental health in our school. You look at the Medford School District, they're looking at the same thing. But what are we doing in a broader sense for our community? Medicaid doesn't, you know, pay for mental health. So this is a big issue. I'm on the suicide, we just did a suicide awareness campaign, and it's something that touches folks, you know, from as young as early adolescents all the way through the spectrum. So that's a big deal. And then our economy, I mentioned earlier in the show, I really feel like we need to focus our efforts around making sure that we have skilled labor. We've got a shortage there, and we've got opportunity for folks to get jobs in those departments, being able to increase our construction so that, you know, we're both putting people to work and we're making sure that people are housed. And I also think that there's a lot of potential for looking at what kind of green technologies we can put in place and what is our economy in the future.
Thank you.
And those are very parallel. And one thing about bringing additional workers in or training skilled workers is where are they going to live? And that is currently a hindrance for economic development. We have a lot of retail and retail jobs. And 40% of the people who live in Jackson County live at the line that if there's one medical event or one car breakdown, they could become homeless. And some families are spending 70% of their income on rent. So that's a huge population of employed people.
The working poor.
The, our working poor to middle class even, because it takes $33 an hour for a family of four to be at the top of that level.
Wow.
Which is about $60,000 a year in income. And that's hard to reach unless you have skilled workers, and then you need housing for them. So there's a gap in there. So housing is key, and then addressing also, at the same time, you need to look at preventive efforts in public health. And that needs immediate attention of what are the gaps in our current delivery system? And I'd like to emphasize that there are wonderful people, very talented, innovative, creative nonprofits and county employees who work in these departments, who are so dedicated to serving the people. And what they need is leadership.
Thank you.
That's going to have to be our last question. I can't believe the time has gone by so fast. And so I'd like to thank you both and wish you luck on your campaign. How many days left?
17.
18.
Oh, 17?
Okay.
Could be 18. Could be 18. Could be 17. Got ahead of myself. Get out and vote.
That's right.
I want to say that.
Exactly.
Fill out that pamphlet, that voter-
Absolutely. And we have a guest in the audience. Carol and I really believe in role models. And you have your nine-year-old daughter here.
I do.
Yep, Maya.
Got my youngest girl.
And so it's good for her to see that her mom is stepping up to the plate.
Yes. So- I've run this campaign knowing I also have 120 middle schoolers watching.
Oh, boy.
So, yeah.
And again, thank you for running.
Thank you.
It's not an easy, especially with Jackson County, as large as it is. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
And our crew?
Oh, our crew, I want to thank them because we couldn't be doing this without them. Let's start with Wanda, who is our director, David Nino, who's audio as well as graphics, and Dorothy, Nino, on camera, and J.C., Joe Curl. Thank you so much for being the field, the, what is it called?
Floor manager.
Floor manager, sorry. Floor manager, thank you.
Yeah, J.C. really stepped up. We've got a kind of a lean crew today, but sometimes that's great. So Girl Talk can be seen on Rogue Valley TV on Channel 115 for Ashland Home Net and 182 for Charter, and that's on 3 o'clock on Saturdays and 6:30 on Thursday evenings. And so we would like to thank you and our guests, and hope that you learned something new today. And I want to apologize to my co-host for not introducing her. And twice, twice I did that. I'm in big trouble. So anyway, thanks for listening, and we hope to see you soon again.
Thanks for us being here.
Thank you.